Get in here, stay in here.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mayor, you want to take the lead on the elections?
Yep, we'll call the meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. First, we're going to start with the election to board chair for 2024, and I will ask for nominations for board chair.
I nominate John Oakeson.
I second that.
I'm going to ask for nominations for board chair. Any nominations for board chair? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate John Oakeson for chair.
Cease nominations, and is that what you're asking for?
No, nominations are done, but I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Oakeson to board chair.
There's a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Chair?
Switch, oh, barrier, wait a minute, switch.
I got.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mayor, you want to take the lead on the elections?
Yep, we'll call the meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. First, we're going to start with the election to board chair for 2024, and I will ask for nominations for board chair.
I nominate Donald Kusson.
I second that.
I'm going to ask for nominations for board chair. Any nominations for board chair? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate John Oakeson for chair.
Cease nominations, and is that what you're asking for?
Nope, nominations are done, but I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Oakeson to board chair.
There's a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Chair?
Switch, oh, barrier, wait a minute, switch.
I got.
Thank you, everyone. Just, I'd like to throw out a challenge to all of us commissioners for this coming year, that we go back and look at our one-on-one commissioner training, what we're actually elected for, and try to abide to that for the coming year. With that, I'll call for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Dave Meyer.
Pardon?
I nominate Dave Meyer.
A nomination for Dave Meyer. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none? For Dave Meyer as vice chairman?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
Committee assignments, I did take a little look at it, but I think there's, I'd like to make a couple of changes, but I'd like to bring them back for next meeting. And one, I'm thinking about a change probably myself in the Sheriff's Committee, and probably one in Human Services, switch it around. I've been on that, I think the Sheriff's one since I've been on the board, so. If somebody else.
Mr. Chair, could we make a motion to accept the current nominations until the next meeting then? So we don't miss meetings?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion to continue our current assignments until our next meeting.
So January 16th meeting.
I'll second that, but I have to amend one thing. I got elected to Lakeland, Lakes County Service Club, or Lakes Country Service Club, so then that would be starting this month.
So you want to add that?
I want to add that to mine, yeah.
Okay, that's.
I don't know if that was on, I thought that was on that list someplace.
Maybe I missed it.
Nope.
Well, we'll make sure we get that on there. A motion is second to approve the current list till our January 16th meeting, and then adopt. Any changes at that time? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, could I just inquire on the AMC committee list here? Is that something the board want to take action on as well, or do you want to wait on that?
No, I think we can do that now. That's pretty much probably standard of what myself, I'd be on the transportation infrastructure policy.
I'm on the Public Safety Policy Committee.
I'm on Health and Human Services.
Commissioner Verbergs on General Government, and Commissioner Nelson's on Environmental.
Correct.
If the board would be supportive of it, you could take the 2023 committee members and just approve the ones that are 2023. What that would allow you to do is there are a number of individuals that play a role in delegates, we could add an additional few, and they can take the place in case other commissioners are unavailable. If you want to wait till the 16th, we can bring you a list of names, but that might be an efficient way of doing it, but I'll leave that up to you.
But nothing's really changed since the 23, so I think we're going to approve that. That motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the AMC.
Motion by Erika. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Current. Anything to add or delete from the agenda? Move to approve the, motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Looking for Barry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Current. Moving on to the minutes of December 19th meeting, any changes, corrections?
I got, I have one under Human Services, number three.
Which page?
Page three of four. Number three where it says Employee Benefits Update Motion, not Human Services, Human Resources, I'm sorry, motion is second to drop any voluntary benefit, okay, with the plan drops, that their plan drops full temperature spits. So that's, I think it needs to say, also say that we are doing that to not use the automatic payment plan, correct? Isn't that what that was?
That was the reasoning.
That was the reasoning, wasn't it?
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be, they can pay for them with their own money, but they won't be using, they won't be using, the county won't be pulling out.
Payroll deduction. Yeah.
So we won't be pulling out pre-tax.
Yeah. So I don't, so I think we need to state that in there. That was all I had.
Got it?
Yep, that's it.
Mr. Chair, number two of that same, under HR, I think it should state, motion is second to carry over vacation hours, I would limit it to the next year. It doesn't state for, to 2024. Make sure this isn't, that's not a continuous, that's just for a one-year.
Yeah. Erika.
I didn't have anything.
The only other question I had, and maybe this is a question for our attorney, but should there be detail in the discussion about the open meeting for the review? Should there be some detail in that, or is that just going to be left open? I don't know if we should, I would like to ask our labor attorney that, if that should be detail in that part of the, or that is fine the way it is. I'm fine with it the way it is, but if it's legally, we have to have that detail. I think we should wait to hear from her, for her opinion.
Chair, I think she's online.
She wasn't earlier.
Great, great. Morning, this is Anne. You should probably put in a reference that, that the meeting, that the, that the meeting was a performance evaluation that was called under 13D.05, and that was requested that it be open.
That's on there. I'm just asking if there should be.
And that's sufficient.
Okay, okay.
That is sufficient, yep.
Motion to approve the minutes.
One second, Barry, I got one correction. Page three of four, under Land Use Environmental. This motion is second on item two was omitted. I look back at my notes, it is myself and Richard carried, so. Any other changes? Motion by Barry to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Any items that need to be removed? You see? It's regular claims, audit warrants, claims over 90.
The only correction that I have in their claims is it states the 21 annual, for AMC, and it's, the whole group is under 21 and should read 23. With that correction?
No.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Barry, second.
I'll second.
Erika? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, open form. We've got a few on here, so when you come up here, when I call your name, if you don't want to speak, you don't, just say you're not going to. Come up, state your name, address, and I'd like to limit everyone to five minutes or less. Scott Pearson?
I think I'm going later under the administrator's time, sorry, I thought.
Okay.
You're doing a presentation, or.
Okay. Somebody just initialed something and crossed it off, another one's crossed off, Bruce and Pam, they are. That'll be the earliest, the 16th, upon a commission, on that one. Dwayne Erickson?
Good morning, Dwayne Erickson, your watershed appointee, this is not the first, I'm sorry. I'm your Becker County watershed appointee person through Clay County, and I'm encouraging you to get that ability, to get your, able to do it on your own. My term is up in April. I'm open for whatever. Did it for 15 years, it's probably young, somebody younger and smarter than me. And I shared some stuff with Pat, like balance sheets for the Red River Watershed Board, the wild rice, you know, asset liability, and some other information on percentages of revenue, percentages of land base, and Pat gave me the, you know, what Bowser had sent him back, and I found it very interesting, but I think with what's going on with the, with the reservation and their wanting to reach out beyond the tribal boundaries, you need to do that and work with Menomen and those. So I'm here for, if I can help get some information, I'm willing to help, so let me know.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Joe Stinger?
My name's Joe Stinger, I'm at 1-804-8360th Avenue, Dry Lakes, Minnesota. I'm here to speak on Pat's behalf. The board should understand that you are working for the people, and the people vote you in. And what you're doing here is not what the people want. In fact, could I see some hands, who wants to keep Pat here? So you see who, that the people want to keep him. Your reasons for getting rid of Pat was, I heard the last meeting, you know, I heard three of you got reasons. One of them was communications. Well, you know, it's a two-way street. The door is always open, you can approach him at any one time. And the wage study was brought up, request by the union employees, update jobs description and questionnaires. Pat did not complete the study. The union contracts, I would expect our chief administrator to propose ideas when talking to the union. It's his job to represent us. Labor fees, our attorney, those fees are involved with the investigation and the lawsuit, with, you guys okayed them. And not Pat. There have been no arbitrations under Pat. So. I think there's some line going on here, so I requested a data privacy request for you guys' phones, and I'm going to see what's going on here, and I'll report back in the next meeting.
Dennis Moise? Anybody else that wanted to speak that wasn't signed in on the form? No, thank you. Reports and correspondence, I know it was a short time between our last meeting, so.
I just had our EDA meeting, which we discussed that contract which we're going to be discussing later in the meeting.
I did.
Yeah, the only one I had was our comp and comp study. And I think that went really well.
That went really well, yeah.
I had the Prairie Lakes Minnesota Solid Waste Meeting, which I couldn't make it to the comp study because of that, we had to change the schedule, but pretty much not much new, other than one of the burners is going to be down for close to a month here this spring. Lot of maintenance repairs, and we can do, could have done just a short term for 50, 60,000, but then I have to probably redo that in eight, less than a year, and do the major stuff, so we're going to do it all in one, so. Didn't think there'd be a big interruption, they're still scheduled to burn about their 55,000 tons. We did start these repairs, we'll be coming out of that capital improvement plan that we started, so year-end budget looks good. We're still working on our waste ash, what we can do with that, and hopefully, I know Chris, the manager down there, is working with our county engineer, Jim Wilson, to see if we could possibly utilize that in a road project over in the Wolf Lake area, just as a demonstration project, and I know Polk County has used a lot of it in road projects, and hopefully we can start utilizing that, rather than spending millions of dollars expanding their landfill facility between, down by New York Mills, so. Other than that, that's about all I had.
So we, John and I didn't have a transit meeting, but Kevin gave us an update. So anyway, our rides for 2024 were up 8.1%, and we have some good news, well, that's good news too. We have a new bus that's going to arrive in February.
Nice.
It's been a few years.
For three years.
For three years, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, that's it.
And we have the next bus ordered, so that one will be right.
And hopefully before three years, yeah.
I just had that comp, that's all I had, that's the only meeting I had.
One other thing, I think, want to mention, reports and correspondence, I think you all received the letter we got back from Polk County. Got a little upset because we changed our plans for our avenue of our solid waste, and just wanted to make the full board aware that we're probably discussing that at our next Environmental Services meeting. We've had multiple meetings with them, and I think probably the big cause of this whole thing was them assuming on a, just a letter that was sent out, I think Larry Canuson was signing at that time, that would send so much waste up there. But since then, things have changed, and with our purchase of additional equipment, we're transporting a lot of our own, and we're still working with Fargo, which we thought we wouldn't be able to, so. Like I said, we'll discuss it in Environmental Services and.
That letter was just from a committee, is that correct? Wasn't a board action?
It came from the county administrator, the letter, the cover letter. There's some other correspondence between their solid waste.
From the Polk County Administrator.
Polk County.
No, but I'm asking, the letter that we sent was just a committee letter, it wasn't a board-approved agreement.
I think we did approve it. Remember, he needed it to make their landfill bigger, he needed it for that study.
They needed it for support for expansion of their.
A support letter for expansion, but I didn't think we committed any.
We did not commit anything, and there was no communication from them for a long time, months, and then all of a sudden, yeah, so.
Right, my point was, I don't think we board committed to any, any extra.
They kind of interpreted that we were going to bring them 10,000 ton. That's a big, at 80 bucks a ton, that's a big budget item for them, so. But we'll have a very meeting before our next board meeting, so we'll report back on that. There we go, so. I haven't had any contact from any of the county board members up there. So I'll probably have to reach out to one up there that I do know, and see if it's, what their feeling is, so. Anything else, reports, correspondence? Any appointments?
I'd like to make a nominee, or to appoint Tony Nissler to the Corment Watershed. I think we've had that posted online, and we haven't had any other interest, and I've talked to Ellis, and he didn't know of anyone, Ellis Peterson, a board member, and the former board mayor, so Tony Nissler, I think he sent his address in on a cover letter last meeting.
Do we second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Current. County magistrate performance review.
Mr. Chair, is Anne on, is Anne available at the same? Make sure she's available.
Yes, I'm right here.
Mr. Chair, I think the question is, for me is, according to our, it's been reported that Mr. Olman has taken another position, signed a contract. Pat, have you, have you signed a contract with another agency?
You heard your performance review, I'm not going to talk to you about my private life, so you can defer to your attorney on what you would like to do with the performance review.
Any comments, Anne? Excuse me.
Well, Pat is employed by Becker County. Whether, there's been a performance review, whether or not the county, I think at this point there was some discussion at the last meeting about whether the county wanted to retain Pat as the administrator. If he has accepted employment and entered into a contract with another governmental entity somewhere else, obviously he cannot remain employed by Becker County if he's employed elsewhere. So this is not really a private-like issue, this is a question of whether he can be employed at two entities at the same time, which he can't, it was a conflict. He can't perform the duties of administrator with Becker County if he's employed by another governmental entity, so this actually is the business of the county. So also the question of.
He's not employed, though. So whether he signed a contract or not, he's not employed by anybody else, he's employed by us right now. So the man's just watching out for himself, because unfortunately, people here don't watch out for him, and it's too bad, because he's one of our best employees.
Well, Mr. Does have an interest in knowing whether he will be employed by the end of the month, I believe. There's a report that he has employment starting within the next 20 days elsewhere.
I guess my point, I have not seen one or resignation letter or anything from Pat yet, so I presume he's still under our employment.
Yeah.
No matter what, I guess, has been printed in the paper.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this review until our February 6th meeting.
I don't like that idea.
Point of order.
All these people.
Point of order. Point of order.
I'll make a second to that motion.
A motion is second to table this review till February.
February 6th is our first meeting in February. I would, I would, friendly amendment to authorize a board chair to call a meeting earlier if you've received a resignation or new information.
Okay, I'm okay with this second. Got a motion is second to table this till February 6th meeting? More discussion?
I got some discussion here. You guys have, you don't, none of you got any good reasons for getting rid of this man, none, okay? I watched you, Erika, you brought up our attorney fees. I checked on them. They have nothing to do with him. Dave, you brought up our wage study. They have nothing to do with him. You talk about communication, he's one of our best employees. I watch him protect our employees. I watch him, when we have trouble with an employee, he fixes it. The thing, everything is so much better around here. But, Erika, because you guys are with the union, and your union Roger Mignier doesn't like him, that's why you want out. Barry's abused him and ruined his relationship with him, that's why he wants out. But everybody's broken all the rules here, except for this guy. He's the only thing standing between you people and our employees. Before that, Erika, you tried to get in and take some punishment away from our employees one time. No, you did, you did.
What do you mean, I tried?
You did. That's what I'm saying. So what I'm saying here is, you guys don't have a good reason for getting rid of our best employee, and you know what? It's time to take care of it now. Don't keep dragging his life down the road. We need to do this today. These people all came here to see what you're going to do. Now you guys can do what you're, do whatever you're supposed to do. But we don't need to drag this down the road anymore. It's not fair to him. He's been nothing but good to us and our employees.
Any other further additional discussion? We've got a motion is second on the floor, or we have to call for a vote then? Vote. Let's do roll call on this.
Aye.
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 Nay?
Nay.
Current. It's tabled till February 6th.
Chair, could I get clarification? Excuse me. I was just going to ask clarification from Anne, since she's the. I was just going to ask clarification from Ann since she's the attorney here. There was an open performance review, which I approved, which is my statute approved. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Is there an opportunity to speak? I would like to have Ann Gearing respond to that.
You asking?
There is.
I'm asking you to ask her.
Should Pat, can Pat respond to his open review?
The review, any performance evaluation is conducted by the employer. That is not, there's not an, an opportunity for anybody to speak at an open meeting regarding their performance evaluation. If there is a performance evaluation and it is in writing, then Minnesota Data Practices Act allows him to submit a written response to that. There is nothing under the open meeting law that, that provides for him to have a open forum to respond to what happened in another meeting, other than what you, I mean, if you have an open forum regarding other issues, certainly. But there, there isn't anything under the performance evaluation provision of the open meeting law that allows him to respond at a meeting. He can respond in writing to anything that is in writing. He certainly has a right to do that. Under the, the administrator's provision statute, if the board were to terminate his employment, there is a provision under that for him to request a meeting at that time where he could respond at a hear, at a sort of a hearing in front of the board. So, if the board at its January or February 6th meeting were to complete his evaluation and decide to terminate his employment, he would have an opportunity at that meeting to respond to a termination.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to hear perspective.
So, I understood you write out, he can respond to us in writing?
Yes. If you, I, I don't know that you have anything in writing. He has a right to draft a response in writing. If you have something in writing, I don't know that you do. But if there is government data that he wants to respond to in writing, he certainly can do that. And certainly, if you were to take action at the February 6th meeting to terminate his employment, he can request a hearing to respond to that.
Yeah, thanks.
Wasn't he hired by the people? Didn't the people hire him?
Can't. I can't really allow you to speak. You should have spoke at open forum.
He was voted in. No, he's not elected official.
Okay. Table till February 6th. County administrators' report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. On page 11, there are three CHIPS contracts for county board discussion and review. This, these contracts were prepared by the, by our county attorney. And there are three individuals that have been selected to provide CHIPS services. These are the same three individuals that were providing CHIPS services that expired in 2023. The courthouse committee played a role in this and as did the, the judges as well. They were able to review applications. And we did inquire about, because it had been a number of years since their CHIPS compensation had been updated, what was their perspective on, on a salary. And so, they are different. And so, I was important to go through those with you. We've got one candidate on page one. Beth Walker has requested 3,000 per month. If you go to page 21, you'll have Timothy Dodd that has requested 3,200 a month. And then finally, there will be Josh, where do I see it here? Is it in there?
Josh How.
Here it is. Yep. Josh Hogg on page 16, 2,800 per month. So, a slight difference in the amount per month. Certainly, the, the board has discretion if they would like to change either of those. There has been some email discussion with county attorney and the courthouse committee about, or, excuse me, the finance committee about that. And I would just ask for the board to provide some direction on approval of those.
Do you know if we're currently getting any foree funding for parent attorneys?
I don't know. I have to, I'd have to inquire with someone that would know that.
And I believe that's a new, a new program, but there's, there's currently foree funding. And I, I believe it has to go through court admin.
Is that for foster?
Well, it's for children in, in foster home. But there's a new, new funding to be able to get some of that reimbursed. And I have no idea like how that, how that works. But it's income-related, foree is. Well, they're, if they have an attorney assigned to them. So, that would, might be something for us to look into.
Kind of a little past history on why Tim Dodd gets a little bit more. He's the senior one. And back when these other two came on, he was going to foster him and the one is going to have a little more experience than others. So, I think it's.
Yeah.
Do you know what's their, their experience?
Tim's been doing it for.
Yeah.
As long as I was in human services.
And Chair, Mr. Howgan and Ms. Walker, in communicating with our county attorney, he's indicated they both had started at the same time. So, it'd be a reasonable request if they, you would like to make those salaries the same. That was.
I couldn't remember.
Forward to the finance committee for consideration as well.
If all going to start the same, but.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to, well, I support both of them being on the same playing field then. So, I, I, I don't know if you want them separately or all together?
No, I think they probably just do the two and then.
Make a motion to approve the contracts with Beth and Josh for, Josh for 3,000 a month and Timothy for 3,200.
Got a motion, a second?
I don't think that's right. I think one of them's 28.
Well, I want, we'll be basically the same in our, in our communications.
I got you.
You move 3,000.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion, Barry, second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Corners contract.
And Mr. Dodd's, you want to take action on Mr. Dodd?
It was.
Or that included all three. Very good. You got that. All right. Super. And the Corners contract, we, we don't have anything to, to mention to you that what we've mentioned before, is we did have an applicant, was reviewed with the finance committee. But because this person is a physician at one of the hospitals, there's a process they have to go through. And so, we will continue with the relationship with Ramsey Medical Center until that's evaluated and brought back to your, your consideration. So, nothing for you to take action on today.
Thanks. Number four, groundwater atlas.
Yeah.
Brought by Scott.
Yeah, I got an email from Brian Malone to Scott Pearson with the DNR. He's got a very brief presentation about the atlas. Please have a seat, sir.
Brian, you want to come up too, or? No, they coming?
And Scott, did you have something that you wanted projected as a, as a?
Yeah.
Could you bring that up? Yeah. We're sorry. We didn't know if there was a presentation coming. So, we'll just need a moment to put that together and.
I also brought atlases with, for each of the commissioners. I'll write up my pass those out.
Please.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what I'm passing out, this is what we call Part B. It's the groundwater atlas for Becker County. It was published in 2023. And it consists of a report booklet and then three plates.
Do you have an extra one?
Ah, yes, sure do.
We have a, one of our watershed representatives here. He might want to take a, right, right to your left, right to your left.
There we go.
And Brian Malone, he can get his own. Brian, get his own.
A lot of people don't know about the county atlas program. It's been around since the early 1990s. It started off in Dodge County, Minnesota, and it's really grown out quite a bit. We've covered just under half the state with county atlases now. We have two parts to the county atlas. Is my PowerPoint coming up?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll probably give my presentation before it's even on screen. So, I better hold back. Oh, there we go. My opening picture here is of a typical domestic water well. This is the backbone of the work we do. Well drillers go out and install these. There's about 60, 6,500 wells in Becker County. And these are our main data source for doing our work. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, this is the Part A atlas. This is plates of the geology. And the geology of Becker County consists of glacial deposits over bedrock. And the Part A is done by the University of Minnesota. They're called the Minnesota Geological Survey. And they do mapping, which is critical for us to do our next work, which is the next slide. Sorry. There is our atlas that I just handed out. It's got a report booklet. That's 77 pages long. It's got 43 figures in it. We talk about the hydrogeology, the water chemistry, the pollution sensitivity, groundwater use. And then we've got our three plates, which is a presentation of the chemistry results and then the cross-sections. And then at the bottom, I highlighted the electronic files. That is available publicly for downloading. You just go to our website. In the search bar, type in atlas, and you can get these documents that I just passed out electronically, downloaded for free. They're Adobe PDFs. Next slide. Thank you. So, what's the value of all of this? I hit four points. There's more than that. But we've now mapped your aquifers. The MGS, the Minnesota Geological Survey, has mapped 38 separate sand lenses in the quaternary that are in use by people drinking water here in Becker County. Now, we've taken those 38 sand formations and we've looked at them. They overlap each other. So, a lot of times, you'll have three or four formations that make one aquifer. And we've mapped up to eight major aquifers in the county. Now, there's a ninth aquifer, which is the water table system. And that's the one we see at the surface, generally expressed by sandy soils and shallow groundwater depths. We also have mapped the sensitivity to pollution. We've improved the county's groundwater chemistry information. Before we came in, the health department had about 70 samples in the county. We've added another 90 samples from domestic drinking water. And we've got 10 lake samples that we collected. And then, of course, there's that GIS electronic information. That's really the legacy that we leave behind here because others can pick up this information now and further improve it now that it's been made electronic. Okay, next slide. Here's the samples we take. This is really the meat of the work we're doing is to find out just where we are. What is the baseline water quality here? When you think your water's changing, what measure do you have other than your taste? And so, now we actually have the solid data on what your water is. We sample a little different water set than what most people think of when it comes to water quality. Usually, the concerns are regarding the organic compounds that man introduces into the system. Well, we're sampling inorganics. We're doing the charged particles. We're doing the metals. And then we're doing residence time work using stable isotopes, tritium and carbon 14 age dating. Next slide. Lot of detail on this slide. I threw it in here just because I want to make a point of how all of this data can be simplified down. That first chart is our stable isotopes of oxygen and hydrogen. And when we plot it in such a way, we can tell you the recharge source of the drinking water from that well that was sampled, whether it's coming from a lake or is it coming from rain. The gray dots are all rainwater. The red dots are all coming from the lake. Out of 90 samples, there are about 18 were lake water. The next chart down is even more interesting and more detailed to describe. But this tells us with all of the samples into one image, that you are drinking a calcium, magnesium bicarbonate water. And we can also see by the clustering of the dots and then the separation of some of those dots away from the cluster, that there are differences in the groundwater. Many of these differences are natural and can be explained through chemistry. But there are also spots that deviate away from the clusters where we're getting increases in chloride and nitrogen. And those are more caused by man. So, this is a way to go in and identify areas that may be concerning to people. Next slide. This is the water table system, the water elevations throughout the county. Most of you know that the east side of the county is in the Mississippi watershed. That dark line there towards the east, that's the Laurentian Divide. Everything to the west goes to the Red River. And here, we're using topography and the watersheds to show which direction the groundwater is flowing. The black small arrows are pointing the direction of groundwater flow for that spot. And you'll say, well, those arrows are going everywhere. And yes, they are because the surface is undulating. It is going different directions. But overall, it smoothes out as you get away from the site. Next slide, please. This is one of the images that if you take nothing else home today, this is how groundwater occurs and moves in the geology that we have. We call it groundwater flow pathways and residence time. Here, we have three aquifers. There's a hill in the middle. The water table aquifer is at the top. There's a confining bed, a first buried aquifer, a second confining bed, and then a third buried aquifer. Very classic for hydrogeology in the upper Midwest. That watershed divide at the top of the hill shows the water to the left moving left and then the water to the right moving right. And then the blue lines are showing the flow pathways of that water, discharging to the stream. The residence time is indicated in the upper unit as days and years for flow. The next unit down, the first confined, shows centuries for that water to move. And then the next and final aquifer down, it takes a millennia for that to move. That's roughly 1,000 years. This is the basis for what we're trying to tell you with our atlas. Next image. And boom, this is our image off of that conceptual image. And I picked one for right outside our doorway here. There's a lot of detail here. I can't, can't tell you everything. I'd be here way past my allotted time. But just generally, the colors that you're seeing here, the grays are your confining units. Those are the clay glacial tills that are non-aquifers. The rose color, the green color, and the blue color are representing our tritium results. And as you can, now, the neat thing about tritium, I'll go into this just a bit, is it was introduced in large amounts into our atmosphere during the hydrogen bomb testing, roughly 1953 is the marker. If it's red in color, that's an aquifer. And this is modern water. That's entered the ground after 1953. If it's green in color, this has a little bit of tritium, but not a lot. So, this is a mixed. So, it's, we're staircasing from modern water into mixed water. And then off to the left, you can see those deeper aquifers. It's like a cluster. Those are blue and those have no tritium in them. So, this means that water's been there before 1953. It's a great marker to go by. Next slide. We come back to those blue sites. This doesn't show up very well. But we do carbon 14 age dating. And everyone wants to know, well, how old's my water? Well, the oldest water in Becker County that we found was 25,000 years old. So, if you take the, going back to the glaciers, that's approximately 12,000 years ago. This is double that in age. That well is only 112 feet deep, which is fairly, fairly shallow overall. Okay, next slide. We do pollution sensitivity mapping. This is the near surface materials. The reddish colored area, those are the sandy soils where you have a water table aquifer. We rank those as highly sensitive. We get into the siltier soils. Those will show up as moderate to low. And then to the west, the very clay heavy soils, those show up as very low pollution sensitivity. Next slide. And who uses our atlas? Government, engineers, educators, businesses and industry, and then private. Government, engineers, educators, businesses and industry, and then private citizens. Next slide. And we, I, will conduct groundwater workshops as part of our outreach. And so I offer Becker County assistance with conducting a groundwater workshop where if Becker County's interested, you can host this by supplying a meeting room, and I'll show up. We'll do about a half-day of presentations with exercises. You can invite your staff to it. You can invite lake association people. You can do watershed people. You can do general public, and I'm more than willing to do that for you if you would like. And that's the end of my talk. You got any questions?
Any questions?
Have you done any arsenic testing? Do you do that?
Yes, yes. Arsenic is an issue in Becker County. It's mostly present in the deeper wells and in, towards the west of the county.
So what, what level, I mean, I know they've changed the threshold a few years ago, but what, for drinking water, what is their recommendation from the state for safe drinking water?
I believe it's ten parts per million is the current threshold. And yeah, it does get moved from time to time.
Yeah, that just got reduced, so, but I know there's some, I mean, that's a pretty big concern in rural, especially Western Becker County, is the arsenic levels, and that comes from both natural and?
Yeah, it can come from both man and from the natural material. As far as I'm aware, there's no way to discern which is the source, but if you take a look at the nature of our deposits, the clays being ground up by the glaciers coming out of the northwest provenance tend to contain the arsenic natively, and the chemistry of the water will bring that out. And so that is naturally occurring.
I think that...
There's different electronic states of the arsenic, but, you know, in general, there's, you know, there's one.
So we put one in, it didn't take it out.
Oh.
So then we contacted the reverse osmosis company, and they said, what type of arsenic is it? Because we can remove this type, but we can't remove that type.
Sure.
Is that true?
So I'm not a chemist. I did have chemistry and a little bit about it. I believe that's true, but I would have to open up the textbook and review that to give you a really good, solid answer.
I think, Dennis, have you got more questions? You probably just contact them and talk to them individually on it.
Sure, and my contact information is online. Go to the DNR website, and if you just type atlas into the search box, you can find me.
Mr. Chair, are both arsenic types the same effect on humans?
I would think so.
Okay.
You know, a lot of it just depends upon exposure. I believe arsenic isn't something that is immediately harmful. It's a prolonged, over a period of time exposure. I know adults can handle somewhat higher levels. Generally, with drinking water, we're looking at contaminants of concern. It's usually the younger people that you see the harm in first.
Excuse me. I think we've got several watersheds. We've got Pelican here, Duane's here. Soil and water, if you want to get a workshop together, I think Brian could probably even spearhead that with Ortera back there and get something set up and...
Great.
One question. Elevated chlorides for nitrogen. Where do you see that?
Yeah, that's an all-dayer. So the chlorides, they can come from wastewater streams. They can come from road salt. There are some naturally occurring chlorides. Nitrogen can come from wastewater streams. It can come from fertilizer. So, you know, you really have, to find out the source, you really have to look site specifically and do a fair amount of work.
Mr. Chair, one last question. How harmful or how much effect does the rural septic systems have on the groundwater?
Definitely out of my genre.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say that depends greatly. Yeah, I don't mind providing editorial comments to that, but we very seldomly do any kind of work at the DNR regarding septic systems. There's other agencies, yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Brian Malone has a question.
We're hoping to put together a workshop on January seventeenth.
Yeah, I haven't heard back from the MGS yet, which we need to believe perhaps a later date might work better for them. We can talk about that later. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I was just gonna just add, if I could, Chair, the, we thought this was, because the county did ask for this investment eight years ago, nine years ago is when it was brought...
Been a long time.
Been a long time, yeah. We thought it was timely just because of the community-based comprehensive plans being discussed. It's only not about zoning and where we can zone things, but if there isn't water there, you really don't want to zone it a certain way that maybe needs water. So we thought it was very timely to bring it to you. I took probably the same chemistry class as you did, and there's one type of arsenic. It's inorganic or organic, but there's different valid states of arsenic, which is different charges is really what it is. So that, but it's just, it is still arsenic. So the, there's one type of arsenic. But we thought it was timely to bring it to you, and when you approached us, we thought a brief presentation would be very helpful to the board and the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your number five, Carson Thompson.
Yes, Chair, and so we, thank you, Carrie. I know our consultant, Tessa, is online, I believe, and she has a presentation she was gonna review at the board to supplement what was discussed at the previous special board meeting. Carrie, did you have anything else to offer to that effect?
I don't.
Okay. And Peggy's got the presentation, or is she bringing it online?
She has it.
Yeah, you might want to ask if Tessa's online, Chair.
Tessa, you online? I thought I saw it up there earlier. Must've, must've dropped out. Has any new schedules been sent out to us?
Carrie?
There was a preliminary one that we were looking at late Friday, but some adjustments needed to be made on that, so that has not went out yet.
Chair, I could send her, continue to send her a text if you'd like to move on. We'll come back to it if that works.
That's fine.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to start with Resolution 124-1A publication bids. We advertised in December required by statute to do official publication of county board minutes, delinquent tax lists, our financial statements. I've given you four options. I'm recommending option one, which would be the Saturday Detroit Lakes, and the second publication for the Tuesday Frazee Forum.
A motion and...
I'll make a motion to approve those two papers.
Second?
Second.
That's 24-1A.
Option one of 124-1A.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, I have two charitable gambling permits. First one is Resolution 124-1B. This is for blue ribbon charities at the Roadhouse on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four in Cormorant Township.
Motion to approve 1B.
Motion by Barry, second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second event is Resolution 124-1D, charitable gambling for blue ribbon charities at Roadhouse on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four in Cormorant Township.
Motion to approve. Is it, Mary, did you say seventeenth or seventh?
December seventeenth.
Because it says seventh in here, or on the resolution.
In the resolution.
It says seventh on the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the date on the application. It should say December seventh.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve 1D. Motion by Dave, a second.
Second.
By Barry, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie.
Thank you.
Seventh is a Saturday, and the seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Yeah, well, Saturday's more likely for a raffle.
Well, yeah, whatever was requested.
Yes. Thank you.
That's it, Mary?
Yep.
You're back.
I'm waiting for it to respond, yeah. I've communicated this, we can continue on. What are we at, probation? Brian wants to come up?
Caught up here on my agenda.
Yeah, page thirty-five. As was mentioned, I won't steal Brian's thunder here, but there are some changes as we've transitioned from probation for some county positions, and Brian's got a resolution for you to consider.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pat and Peggy. So we are in the midst of a retirement right now with one of our part-time support staff. We've had two part-time support staff in our office for years, and we are looking to have a change of operation in regards to how we do our probation services for, or excuse me, our support staff services for our probation officers on that side of our supervision. And so what I'm requesting is we take those two positions currently allotted for fifty-six hours a week and move those into one state job. So basically, that'll funnel that down to forty hours per week. It'll be a full-time position that'll be open competitively to the public. Our current part-time employee would be able to apply, obviously. So there's some cost savings that come with this also, but then also that position would be a full-time state. We would pay for the office space, et cetera, et cetera. Everything would be just under our umbrella with a county bill-back type of structure where the county just continues to pay for that position, but again, it won't be fifty-six hours, it'll be that forty. And so what I have to have is, first of all, board approval, but then I also have to have your administrator submit the request of the board to transition that position over to the state. Currently, our employees, am I okay to say they're hourly here? Is that, okay. So the employees are in a range of twenty-one to twenty-four dollars an hour or so. Our state wages are nineteen fifty-seven up to twenty-five ninety-five. So it's basically the same. So it's not going to be much of a difference financial-wise for the county, so.
So we wouldn't pay for the benefits?
We pay for the benefits over there as well. Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's included in those costs.
It's not a cost savings for us overall, but with the new increased revenue that we're gaining, it's not costing us anything for the year.
Correct.
So, and I think it's a more stable fit for us, too, and it will, I think, I think it's a partnership. We discussed it earlier. We haven't discussed it lately, but we've kind of accepted that this is a better proposal in the long run for that office.
Yep.
Being they're moving, they're over there anyway, it's easier to supervise if they're your employees.
Exactly. The other thing, too, is you'll have a little bit because we're not at fifty-six hours a week, so you'll have that sixteen hours, thirty-two hours a month of savings and salaries there as well, so offset a little bit, but.
Got a motion, or a resolution before us, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 01241E.
All second.
All second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Pat, does that give you the authorization then to put that request?
It does, yes. And as Brian indicated, it'll be a more efficient way for us to manage this because basically we're going to get for probation out of the bill from the state, and we will pay the bill, and there won't be any intricacies with employees' positions or insurance or anything like that. Think I got that right?
Okay. Go back, is that...
Yes, Tessa's back, if Chair, if you'd like to reach out to her.
You online there, Tessa? There you are.
Thank you, yep.
What updates do you have for us or information?
Sure. I'm going to just share my screen. I put a little PowerPoint together just to discuss kind of what I have for you to think about and next steps for you all. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
So I just did a recap of the last one. I'm looking at to evaluate the jobs, make competitive wages, have that twenty-grade pay grid, twelve steps, one through ten would be annual, and that eleven, you would get two years after step ten, and step twelve would be two years after that, step eleven, and there is a larger increase there. Is that correct? Is that, was that the board's intent on building this pay grid?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. And then I just kind of put some of the board's concerns on some of the positions that we did look at. Market findings was the same. I won't take too much of your time on that. So what I did do is I created your pay grid. So again, it has twenty grades going down. Those grades are determined by the pay equity points, and then someone would move through the system annually through the step ten. And then there is a step eleven, twelve, but you would wait those two years. There is a bigger increase there. I put three-point-five percent. If the board chose, they could increase that. I know that you would have to obviously get union buy-in on that as now you have annual, you know, steps, but they also lessen as you go through the system. So this would basically, step ten would be very competitive with the market as that's what we see, you know, eight to ten steps, and then the eleven and twelve would be more rewarding for tenure in that work with the county to maintain and retain those employees. The minimums would be increased, moved to make you more market competitive on the recruitment side. Are there questions on this grid or other alternatives you, the board, would like to see?
Just a question or two. On the percentages up on top, those can be set by the colony board?
Yeah, that's, basically, that's how some, the percent between steps. So again, if I was on step, grade one, step two, when I move to step three, it's a three-point-two-five percent. The last time we talked, we kind of wanted to bump it in the beginning to get people in the door, and then you could slow it down, and then we added those two-year increment steps, I'm gonna call them, and bumped it back up as we thought that was important to retain our, the employees at Becker County.
Thanks.
But if you want to keep them consistent or anything, that definitely can change. Are there any thoughts by the board of like or other suggestions on this grid?
I guess we really haven't discussed what percentages between steps. I think once we...
What are our, what are we currently at? Is it right around three?
Right around three.
Yeah, I would say three, three-point-two-five is where we're at now. Yep.
So it differs now among steps?
There is a little bit of variance.
Okay.
But imagine this mirrors what we have except for the last two steps, which is actually an add-on, which...
I would say yes.
You divide the three and a half by two, and you, you know, one-point-seven-five annually after those last two, so it's more money at that level percentage increase. I think we kind of zeroed in on that at last meeting.
And what it does is it allows you to be on that eleven and twelve, you know, above market, but moving them, but at a slower rate. It wouldn't be annual, but it could be two years or if the board decided some other range. But what it really does is it keeps you very competitive to the market and then slightly above if you stay with the county. You know, I mean, it shows that we were worried for your work, your competency and the work that's provided. And again, so the new grid would put you five percent above market on the, and that's market average on the minimum, and then nine percent on that maximum. And again, you know, seven percent is right there because of that additional steps and the years. So that step ten is very competitive to the market. And I just put this in here just to kind of show you, the red is where you currently were, so your system was really flat and it kind of moved up. The blue would be where, what the benchmark does, so the blue lines and then the green lines is what the new does. So this really matches what the market is doing. And, you know, we can give this to the board to look at and more in-depth, but we wanted just to kind of show them what this grid did and what it fixes and kind of how it matches that market. So the next, like I would say, decision-making, and we have the classifications in here too, we can talk about that, but is for the board to kind of decide how they want to, if they agree with the grid and then looking at the classifications, if they agree with those, is how do you implement or move people to that grid? So, and I know that we're on January second, so this January first date, you guys can move ahead to another date, but implementation, one would say that everyone would get that two point five percent increase on a set date, if it's January first or a different date, and they would move into the new grid. Again, what that means is if I'm at nineteen forty and I'm agreed, this is where I would come in, I would come into the grid at nineteen ninety-seven. So on January first or whatever set date, I would get that two point five percent cola, move into the grid, and then on my anniversary date, if I was in good standing, I would get an anniversary step. This, you still have twenty-seven employees that were maxed out, they'll just be getting the two point five percent and thirty-nine percent of the employees, or thirty-nine employees, not percent, sorry, are below the rate. So they're the biggest cost for this implementation. And so that four hundred and sixty-one thousand is the cost of doing that.
Tessa, a question for you. So that, does a two point five percent increase go before we switch over to the grid or after?
It, you basically get it and then you move into the grid, but this is only option one. I know that before you guys saw a different option from Mark, and I also have that in here, and I have like, I'm going to say marrying the two together kind of option. And if you don't like them, but the big thing is, is I want to make sure we're clear on if we're guaranteeing the two point five percent cola or whatever you're calling it, when does that take place? Because that kind of sets into how everything else moves.
Well, and Chair, if I just could just remind the board, and since there's a lot of people listening, just for Tessa, so Tessa, our county's personnel policy automatically gives a person an additional step when they hit their anniversary date, it's not based on performance, they get that per the county's personnel policy.
Okay.
And typically the cola's been January first.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this is just one option and then. Oh, I'm sorry, I did option two, I'm.
No, you were on, you were on option one.
I what?
No, she was on two, but.
But she had six thirty, five ninety-nine dollar amount was on option.
Oh, okay, well, so this one, what it does, oh, okay, okay, you're right, you're right, sorry, that confused me. This option two basically says on January first, everyone would get, or whatever set date again, for those listening, would get that two point five percent cola, which is still that amount. They move into the grid on their anniversary date and an additional step on their anniversary date, so meaning, again, in this scenario, if I'm at that grade two and I'm making nineteen dollars and forty cents, I get my two point five percent on January first and my anniversary date isn't until September first. I would move into the grid at this nineteen ninety-seven on my anniversary date and get my steps. So that would guarantee they would have gotten the same step they would have gotten in the old system, if that makes sense, but it pushes implementation or any movement into the grid until their anniversary date. So the cola everyone gets at the same time, but everyone's kind of moving into the grid at various points.
Would that be difficult through payroll?
Yes.
Yes.
But that, you have your normal step movement right now on your anniversary date, you would just be giving them two movements basically on their anniversary date.
Yes.
Two movements, meaning into the grid and then their step.
Yep. It just, what it does is it slows that cost down because there isn't the implementation right away, do you know what I mean? So implementation is the cost it takes to move everyone into this new grid. So either you can do it on January first, I also did it on your, because you have that movement on your anniversary date normally. If you delayed it, it obviously, you know, slows down that cost a little bit. And then option three is you move into the grid on your anniversary date with an additional step if it's less than two point five percent. This one gets really tricky though, because if you have someone in December, you would have to move them quite a bit through to guarantee a two point five percent. So I would not recommend this because in this example, like your assessment tech currently would make twenty-eight, twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents if you guaranteed them a two point five, because they only have two weeks left if they're in December, they would get moved up to that twenty-eight dollars and that would be a huge cost for the next year. So I like the, doing the cola upfront, guaranteeing that and then doing any movement either on that date or on their anniversary date. And then the last one would be, oh, would be kind of the same way, this is what you saw with, what Mark presented, they would move, they would get a two, move into the grid on their anniversary date and additional step if it's not two point five percent, but then that would be a cost for the entire year. So. Is that a question to me or is that?
Oh, is this someone online?
Oh, okay. So that's a closer cost to what you saw with what Mark had presented earlier, but again, you have to cost it out for the whole year. I, if someone were asking me, I like doing the cola right away, everyone gets the same benefit and then deciding if you implement movement into the grid on that date. It could be, you know, the board wants to see the classifications and that, so we're going to do the cola on January first, maybe you say implement, movement or implementation February first or whatever date that is, and then on their anniversary date, the rest. But the last two, I just think it really, if you, if you move someone and then what we want to guarantee them a two point five, it really gets tricky and it changes the cost a lot, where I think if you guarantee the two point five right away, everyone is guaranteed that and it's consistently applied of how they move into the system.
Option two is kind of a, staggers the financial blow to the colony, it's kind of staggers it out a little bit. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, because they would basically get their cola right away or that two point five and then they don't make any movement into the grid or their anniversary step until their anniversary date.
So they don't move into the new pay scale?
Yep.
Until their anniversary date?
Yep. And basically step one says we would move you into the grid on your anniversary, or the, on that cola date, January first, you get the cola and your implementation and then your step on your anniversary date. But again, there is a difference in price. And I know that's a lot like of options to look at, but I think, just think about it logistically, how you want to move people, do you know what I mean? Like, give them the cola now, guarantee it, or movement into the grid right now, or wait until their anniversary date, or their, you know, you guys could say, we would like to do it this way, there can always be another option.
When would we have to decide on what option we'd want to go with?
You can, this, this can just be stuff to like process and then we can send you over more data to make decisions, but, you know, the thing is if you have any other option that you'd like to see, that'd be helpful, but you don't have to decide, I don't think, today, I'm sure people are going to want to know what your decision is, the least regarding the two point five percent cola. But again, you, your biggest goal was we want, what we do, we want to make sure is done right and, you know, with the board's support, so.
I think if we could get additional information sent out to us so we can look at them.
Specifically one or two, like I think, I think one or two would be the ones.
Yeah.
That we, yeah. Three or four do seem a little confusing.
Okay.
Anything else, Tessa?
No, I think then if we send out this information, then I can send the classifications to Carrie, was that your intent?
Yes.
Okay. Because then you can kind of see how it, the classifications, like work in the county, how it's aligning from top all the way down through, and then the spreadsheets will show kind of how the movement is and what the impact is. Is there more information that the board would like or needs?
Just a question, on the twenty-seven employees that are maxed out, is that even on the step eleven and twelve? They're still maxed out on twelve?
Yeah, so they would just get their cola, I think that's how you would normally treat them, is that correct, Pat?
Yes.
Yeah. You had a lot more employees that were maxed out in your old system or current system, so this helps that problem, but it just means that they're paid right where the market is.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, if I could ask, Tessa, this is Pat, there was an investment that the board approved in early twenty-twenty-three, as you know, of an increase, it was around seven to ten percent in wages. That is an actual foundation, I know you've used to look at these options. I guess the question I would have, and I just would like the board to hear is, if that seven to ten percent hadn't happened, these tables would not be where they're at right now, correct?
Oh, no, I mean, the fact that you came in where you are was good, so they made movement, but again, while you move, everyone else is moving too. So that's the other thing to think about, so, and I know it, it's, it can be irritating as a board member to be like, we just did this, can't we put it on, like, celebrate for a year or two, but unfortunately, the market is so volatile right now that everyone else is moving. So I think what you did was a great first step. Now this would be the second step, and I would say the next step would be, how do you maintain this? When do you look at it, how often, do you know what I mean? So you don't have a gap between when you're looking at it and not. And then, I mean, further down, once you guys agree to classification, sending that out, having that appeal process so that the employees can finalize, yes, this is, this, you know, this is where my job is going to fit in. And do you do that with their J A Qs or do you want their job descriptions completed?
Tessa, one more question, the thirty-nine employees that are below minimum rate?
Yep.
To bump them up, I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious on a number.
Sure.
So they went, whatever step they're on, what would it cost to bump them up one step? Beings are below, I mean, I'm just curious on what that would cost the county to bump up one step for those that are below.
So.
I mean, just the ones that are below.
I just want to make sure I understand you, Commissioner, so in, I'm going to say this example, let's say employee A is currently making thirty dollars an hour and the market says that they should be in this grade ten, so they should be at thirty-two. So what I mean when they're below men, we have to get them to thirty-two ninety-two just to be at market men. Are you asking then what it would be to move them an additional step?
I think so, I'm just curious, like, we have some staff that have been, you know, usually it's custodial or, or.
For sure.
Jail at the lower end, so they've had years of experience, say they were maxed, I don't know where they would be, but maxed out on their steps currently and then they come in at a step two, you know, or, you know, for the new scale.
Sure.
And I don't know how you differentiate where the, you know, how you draw that line, but I was just curious if that was, if that was a, if that was a number available or not.
Yeah, so.
Not to go up to where they were marketed, just to try to bump up closer to market.
Yep, yeah, so I mean, whenever you implement, there's always going to be those, those instances where I was at step eleven, now I still should be at step eleven and unless you guys find unlimited money, that's not how it works, because we don't know when the market moved and you're asking me to pay today's rates for yesterday's work, that's the other piece of it. So we try to move them in, but to your point, there, a lot of counties do look at that and say, well, that isn't really fair then for those employees if they're just coming into the market. Now, they're going to have a ton of growth, which means their top five grows and all of that, but a lot of them will want it now. So you could say, if you've been with the county, like one rule could be, if you've been with the county more than ten years or five years and you're coming in at the men, we're going to move you one. Or just those thirty-nine, we're going to move you, so everyone comes in at least at step two.
That's kind of, that's kind of what I was.
Sure.
Like you said, a five-year, five-year employee, I mean, shouldn't come at the minimum, come in at the minimum, that's kind of where I was looking at.
We can run that scenario, yep, it's pretty easy. I mean, the nice thing is, and we could have it like, I don't know if you guys have like a work session, but I have the spreadsheet where it's live, so we can show that cost and we can show you like what the costs those thirty-nine are, and then if you do it, what does it do to your end cost? Should those thirty-nine, do you know what I mean? So we can kind of do some of your scenarios live? If that would be helpful.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Nope, I don't have anything.
That would be real helpful.
I think if we get some information sent to Carrie and get it out to us and.
Then once you receive that information, is it the board's wishes to do some type of a work session after that, or you're going to wait for the following board meeting?
I think we get the information prior to.
Okay.
Board meeting, we can look it over and discussion, if you think we need a little work session, we can.
Okay.
Move it from there.
So the target is the next part, okay.
And some of those, some of those other things can be always, I mean, you look at those later also, I mean, it's not something.
There'll always be mechanisms to address those in there, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay. I think we can take EDA.
Yep, that's Cody.
Cody, I thought he, I saw him walk in. A little ahead of schedule, but.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning Cody.
Morning Cody.
I have before you today, just approval for our housing management services contract in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred for a one-year contract. The memo, I believe, was in your packet, so it kind of lays out the prior years, what we've had with the same management company, that'd be Midwest Minnesota Community Development Corporation. And down on the bottom there, it shows the properties that it supports, but.
Need a motion just to support the memorandum?
Yep, just to support the amount in the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second that.
Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody.
Veteran Service.
Morning, Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners. Seeking board approval to accept a donation from the Damien Society. They have an annual fundraiser, a home tour fundraiser that they use for their philanthropic purposes. And one of the purposes is they donate 100 Becker Donnie Plus Tokens to the Veteran Service Office, and that helps us, you know, distribute to needy veterans, some homeless veterans, some low-income, so. Seeking your support and approval for that.
Motion to accept the donations, resolution 1F.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve 1F.
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, this, again, a thanks to, thanks to the Damien Society. This isn't the first year they've done that. I mean, I think it's something they do quite often.
Yeah, it's been several years.
So it's a, it's a great, great asset for our veterans.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think we take Human Services here, they just.
Yep. Christie's here.
Christie's here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what I'm bringing today is looking to approve a new fleet purchase for Human Services. It originally was a purchase or approved in October of 2021. But due to shortages and those types of things, we just got a quote from North Country Chevrolet, who handles the state's contract pricing for new vehicle purchases. And the quote is higher than what was originally approved in 2021. So it's an increase of $10,626.20. Originally, it was an Equinox, and this is a Chevy Traverse 2024. Also, the original purchase was going to include funding through a donation received in public health. However, those funds are no longer available. So we did outline a couple of alternative funding options. One, we could use the special general fund account, which is generally, or previously known as ARPA funds. Or we could use the Human Service Fund, the current year budget savings. For that additional.
Mr. Chair, current year would be, that be 24 or 23 budget savings, are you talking about?
I was saying, I, I think it, I think it was from 23.
24.
On a B O.
But, but she was saying that we would use the 2023 current year budget savings. So what, what they didn't use in 2023.
Didn't we approve at our last meeting up to a certain amount?
That's for a different vehicle.
Oh, that's for a different one.
That was for the one that.
Got total, yeah.
Do you, do you know, Christie, how often are all the fleet vehicles that Human Services use?
All at one time? I don't know if I could give you an exact.
Okay.
I will say the van is probably not utilized as much as possible. This would, we're hoping to retire if this purchase is approved, the van, because it is our oldest fleet vehicle. It's a 2010, it has around 150,000 miles on it. And it doesn't, it doesn't drive.
It's not safe.
Right.
I shouldn't say it's not safe.
And we use those larger vehicles to, you know, transport our larger families or sibling groups, things like that. So it would be beneficial in, in those regards.
Well, that was, that was my question, why, why we upped it from an Equinox to it, or a, was it Equinox? A five, it's basically a five-seater to a seven, eight-seater now.
Yes.
And you need that, does, do you need that room, or can we go to a lesser, lesser vehicle?
This is the only vehicle that, that is available that he gave us a quote for.
Well, this is just state bid, you can go to any dealership and get prices.
Right, it's correct.
So you can get a smaller vehicle on locally. So my question is.
And I think the Traverse was what we were looking at for the last vehicle, the one that we talked about in the last.
Wasn't a Traverse, because they were less money. We only authorized up to $32,000, and Traverse is a higher price.
But I think the Equinoxes, when we looked at them in our Human Services meeting, they were more than 20, they were more than $33,000, I thought.
Well, the original quote was for 23.
No, I know, but now, currently, the ones we looked at were more than that price.
23 was 2021.
I just, I just know you can get a five-seater for under 30. Or in that 30 range, so. I, I, do you need the, do you need that eight-seater for larger families if you're going to retire? And you kind of explained, you're retiring a van that, that used the larger seating.
That would be our, our goal, yes.
I would say, in my experience, a lot, at least one larger vehicle is needed in Human Services, just because there are a lot of larger families or sibling groups that may come into care.
Says eight seats, that, that big for small people, for kids, yeah, yeah. Using, so that's not that big a vehicle either.
Well, I would, I would just ask that the Human Service Committee kind of do a, a overall review of your.
Well, that's, that's, that's why, what I was wondering was, I would like to know how often, and maybe we can bring this to the Human Services Committee, how often are all of the vehicles checked out that, that we need? That many vehicles?
Wish of the board?
So.
Go back to.
I think it should go back to Human Services Committee and then.
Committee and look, other options?
We have.
Do we?
Go ahead.
How, when, when do we need to let them know by?
She didn't relay that information to me.
Okay.
I'd have to ask.
I think you'd have to act, if this was the one you ended up with pretty soon, quicker, it'd probably be gone.
We could make a motion to authorize the committee to move forward with this purchase if, if they deem it necessary.
A motion?
I think they, I'll make a motion to authorize the committee to move forward with the purchase if they deem it need, needed in their, in the fleet for Human Services.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave, to make, authorize the Human Services Committee.
And pay for it out of last year's savings.
Yep.
23 savings.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm good with the rest of that, okay?
Any further discussion?
What could I offer something, and I think you've already said it, the board, Commissioners have already said, these vehicles fly off very quickly. And so is, is the committee, when we say committee, is it just the two Commissioners we're talking about? And so there, could there just be an email, some clarification? Because the, the last time we brought you a car, and it went to the committee, we had to come back again and give you a whole list of more cars because they all got sold. So is it just a matter of just communicating with the two Commissioners that are on the Human Services Committee and move forward?
That's my.
Okay, right.
So it should be done ASAP, because this one is on state bid. And those will disappear a lot sooner, so. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie. Thanks.
I'll work on getting those numbers for you.
Thanks, Christie.
Ahead of, ahead of schedule, I think we'll take a 10-minute break.
I would be.
Richard.
With the, okay, 10 if you want, but the, seems like a long time, so the.
Yeah, 5.
Because it'll get to be close.
Right.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners. A few items for your consideration, first being our notice of annual construction advertisements. We would like to again designate our website as the official advertising site for all our construction projects. This is allowed by state statutes and it's just approved through a resolution. Motion to approve 1C.
I'll make a motion to approve 1C.
Second.
Motion by Erica, second by Richard. Any further discussion? Hearing on all the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
Second item, is a resolution approving agreement with the DNR. We recently, or we've had an agreement these past few years to do preliminary design work on the Heartland Trail with the county being the lead. That has expired and we are bringing forward a new agreement to finish the final design and assemble construction plans. We will still lead that work, working with our consultant on that and this agreement essentially just lays out the responsibilities of each organization.
I'll make a motion to approve that agreement.
Motion by Richard. I'll second that. Any discussion? I have one. How much design is left to do on that? It's just...
Well, essentially it's signatures and maybe some minor adjustments. We have to get permits and that, but plans are about 95%.
The plans are pretty well. That's what I thought, so.
Yeah.
Another discussion?
That's 1H, correct?
1H, yes, correct.
That was your motion, right?
Motion from Richard.
For 1H.
1H, and who seconded it?
You did.
You got to talk and... Thanks for reminding me. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
Then finally, I'd like to continue a little discussion on the Heartland Trail. As you know, we've been working on this a long time and with our plans being close to completion, our goal is to start advertising for that work. We do have one holdup with that is we're still working to acquire an easement. I've given you some maps there to show where that easement is. Currently, that property is sold under contract for deed. The buyer has approached us and is willing to, you know, sell the easement, but the contract for deed does not allow that. I've tried to work with the, which would be the seller, I guess, to allow that to happen and I just have, had not been successful in getting response. It's just been no response at this point. I can continue to work with there, but we have determined kind of a backup plan that would allow us to do that. Originally, we were approached by the buyer that he would be willing to refinance his contract, which would essentially buy out that contract. He would do that with his bank, but there would be a difference in interest rate from what his contract for deed is and what the new financing rates are. That is about anywhere from 3% to 4% right now and in the range of $13,000. We had some discussion in the Heartland Trail Committee that we could also have the county or even the city mention they could do it as well. We could refinance that and provide the same rate so there's no cost to the buyer there, you know, on the increased rates and then do that. That way, we would essentially have to provide approximately, I'm thinking there's $150,000 to $170,000 remaining on the contract for deed. It's a five-year contract and he's a little over halfway through on that. And if we refinance that under the same terms, we would provide that money for approximately two years at a rate of 4% interest. So, we would save that $13,000. I don't know. We may be able to get better interest rates, I don't know, investing $150,000 somewhere else, but it's not, I wouldn't think would be that much. So, it's kind of, we're offering that up as a possibility and we wanted to see if the board had a appetite to pursue that.
I think the ideal route is to get the, be able to go around that wetlands.
Yes, we, that's a desire. If we, if we cannot get it and we do not purchase the easement, we'll have to go back into design and design the trail to go through the wetlands, which would require wetland mitigation process. It will slow the project down again and the cost of purchasing wetlands is not as much as easement, but it will cost us money. The Heartland Trail has been fully supportive of getting this easement and previously the county board a couple of years ago approved to spend, provide $5,000 or $7,000 per acre, which is a little under what I have negotiated with the owner and that difference would be made up, I think there's a commitment from the city of crazy of $10,000. So, we do have, you know, money committed to purchase that easement. But if we cannot, you know, get the signatures and that, you know, and it fell through and we wanted to keep plowing forward, it still costs us money to do that.
There's no way to lease, lease with option of purchase at the end? Would that be a...
Lease from the...
Lease the easement temporarily and then with an option of purchase?
I don't know if the DNR would allow that. Usually, they like to hold a recorded document of, I don't know, they don't require fee, but they require easement possession of property before they do any construction on it. I guess I don't know of any mechanism for the mechanism.
Yeah, I don't know. It's not, it's not clean, but neither is borrowing an individual money from state, from county funds. That's, it's not very clean either. I mean, I'd like to borrow money at 4%.
No, I understand.
You know, that's, everyone would.
Yeah, I don't know that I feel good about.
It might be the smartest thing. Might just be the smartest thing, but it's, it's not very favorable.
Well, I guess the risk would be low as far as he's over halfway into his payments. We would secure that land if he defaulted. We would still then own that parcel, but, you know, we would essentially have paid $150,000, but he would have lost that equal amount too in what he's paid so far in his contract.
Well, I agree. It's an easy fix, but I, we're treading on water where, or that we're using taxpayers' money to fund an individual and it just, it just doesn't sit well. I mean, that's, I mean, I understand it's logically, it's the best solution, but when you're using taxpayer funds, it just, I just don't, I just don't feel comfortable with that.
It is the best solution. We go with other out wetlands, that could delay the project for another year or two with the way things go and then redesign and...
Is that something that is even allowable to use public funds for?
Well, I, I think, yes, I think you can use public funds for it, but I think the one, the one concern I would have is, is there a business subsidy rule that applies? So, if I'm on the government and I provide you a loan at a below-market interest rate and that's what Commissioner Nelson's alluding to, it, it may require a business subsidy hearing and, and we don't have an updated business subsidy policy yet. So, now there are exceptions to that on the amount and what you're using it for, but I'd like to clarify that. But can, can a county borrow money? Yes, you can finance things, but that's where the business subsidy issues apply. And of course, the questions of interest rate and why don't I get that same interest rate at others is part of that business subsidy hearing. I imagine you'd hear from the public on that.
Could we, could we make a purchase offer on that parcel? I know it still has to go through, but make it, what, what would that purchase need to be for him to be able to refinance and not be able to make it?
Well, I think he could still refinance through his bank. He's willing to do that if we were willing to offer up that difference in interest, you know, between the four and whatever current rates are.
I would like to own the piece of property then, I mean, myself, if we're gonna, if we're gonna pay that.
Well, essentially, we are. We can, we could take it in fee. Our goal would be to then eventually sell it back to the DNR because it serves their state trail purposes, so then we could recoup that. I think it has some, it doesn't really have value to the owner per se because it is a wetland and it's limited and he has no authority to, you know, like construct on it, but it's a, it's a natural amenity, I think, that serves the trail well. But we could certainly own it in fee instead of through easement if that's preferred.
It's an option.
Yeah, it is.
I guess pursue the different options on it.
Is this money reimbursed then by DNR?
DNR will only reimburse based off of an appraisal of market value. We are currently probably paying more than market value. We are paying, we have offered what he paid per acre over the entire parcel and if you looked at, you know, the different land types, this would probably be less than, you know, the prime.
But in reverse, then land price went up considerably too?
Since we've negotiated, I would assume, yeah, so we're probably, you know, we still have that agreement on that offer.
So, what are you looking for from us today? Do you want authorization to move forward with purchasing or...
If we were to move forward, we have the option of him, you know, giving the information from his bank and what that would be for him to refinance and then that difference in cost, that would be him to incur over the remaining term of that contract. We would be paying for that essentially. That would be one way if you do not want to go the way of us financing.
I guess I would look for consents at the board. Should we be looking at financing? I, I just don't like that option at all.
I would say research, that option plus where you're talking about the outright purchase or whatnot.
Sure. No, certainly, I can, we could bring those two options back, you know, as far as what that cost would be for him to refinance through his bank and then we could provide you the particulars on a mechanism should, you know, the county finance it. You know, we would look at those best options on how that mechanism would work.
And, and maybe it, I mean, maybe it will go through EDA rather than county. I don't think, EDA probably is a better fit than, I don't think county funds would be a good fit for it, but maybe EDA would have some funding availability to float, to bridge that.
Yep.
Bring us back some more detail on the options.
All right.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Sheriff Kline, there.
Good morning.
Morning, Chair.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have one item today, which is I'm looking for approval to accept our 2024 State of Minnesota Federal Boating Safety Equipment Grant. We received our grant request of $67,198 to purchase a, a new boat and water boat. It's a 22-foot seaborne boat. And then, the, in an August meeting, the county board agreed to commit $20,000 and then we would use, or use the proceeds from that sale of our current boat to offset the rest of the cost.
I'll make a motion to accept 1G or approve 1G.
Motion by Dave, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica to approve 1G, the 24 supplemental boat safety equipment grant for $67,198.
Correct.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Should we talk about the company's plan update first?
Do the comp plan update?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we can do that, but Moira is probably not going to be on until 10:25 either. I just told her that that time is kind of hard and fast due to this other stuff, so unless she's... Moira, are you online by chance?
I sent her an email.
Yeah, I did. I spoke with her this morning, but...
Well, and Chair, we could, we could still move on this. I, I, there was discussion about this at the planning and at the committee level. Commissioner Jepson was on that, as, as was I, so maybe the board can be persuaded to fore, to move on this, but I did just send her another email and an invite, but you want to start just giving an overview of what we're talking about?
Yeah, it's just some further mapping needs. There's some GIS layers that we don't currently have right now that Bolton and Mink were looking for somewhere to do with parks and trails. Others were to do with shoreline areas and steep slopes, so they just offered to create those layers for approximately, I think it was $3,200 versus us do it internally. That was mainly the discussion.
And we attempted to try to do it internally, but we just, we, their staff is not capable of doing those layers. And so, Bolton and Mink can do that for us, but there is an additional cost. The community-based comprehensive plan is being funded by special general revenue dollars, so if you were to approve this, we would use some additional special general revenue dollars.
So, the total would be roughly 3,174?
That, yes. And I think there actually is some in there that we potentially could eliminate, so if anything, it would be less. I was just going through the list a minute ago, but, and granted, a lot of this stuff will be useful in the future as well, like that steep slopes and shoreline layer would be beneficial for us going forward.
And you, this is not in the budget?
That was not in the...
Original, original cost.
Yeah, the RFP, no, it was not.
So, this could be taken out of our special revenue code.
And you think, Kyle, that these would be beneficial to have as part of our comp plan moving forward?
Yeah, and then definitely just for us to use in the future as well.
I, I guess that's my question too. How, how useful will these be? How many hits will we have on them, you know, for the public to, to use? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put it through my head. How many times will someone, I mean, I think that thousand-foot buffer from the HW of lakes are, I mean, that would be useful for many...
She's online, Chair. This is Moira. Moira, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me? Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Chair.
What's the wishes on board on doing the GIS?
Well, Chair, if I might, maybe you could just give Moira's thoughts. Moira, this is Pat here. We were just talking about the GIS layers and the question that was being asked is how important is that an investment from your perspective? So, could you give an overview for the board, the importance of the layers and what we'll be doing with them?
Yes, it's very important simply because we're doing the land use plan and the zoning together, right? So, we try to talk about transportation, infrastructure constraints, where can we build? We're, we're talking about where can we grow? So, what we start doing is we start mapping all of that, shoreline, extreme slopes, parks, forests, things that we wouldn't build on, and then we start identifying what are those locations. So, each chapter in the land use plan will actually have a theme, so the transportation chapter would have a transportation map, infrastructure would have an infrastructure map, housing and so forth. But then ultimately, we will also have a future land use map, so all of the discussions will lead to, to that map, which is where you want to grow in the future. It's important to not just have text when we, you know, do the zoning code with the standards and the districts, but it's also important to show the vision in an illustrated way on a map. So, the maps are an integral piece and I believe that you, you have a lot of the layers that we can reuse, so we really minimized our hours. We have not charged for coordination internally because we're just going to absorb that in the original fee, so we've really tried to not add, you know, more money to, to the proposal, but it is important and it is integral to really understand where we're at physically and spatially.
How much was it, Kyle?
$3,174.
That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I think if we're, for the money we're spending on our comprehensive plan, if we really need a good thorough one, I do think that having these maps would be beneficial. So, I would make a motion to approve the 3,001, up to 3,174 for the GIS mapping.
Motion by Erica, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, a question. Does this, does this put, do we have the map of our public accesses to the lakes? Is that...
As a layer.
You know, state and county and to access to all our lakes, I think that's, I mean, that's a very important one to make available.
I know the DNR has some mapping for that, but I'm not, I don't believe it's on our actual layer. I don't see it anywhere here.
I mean, it should be a map of both state and county-owned accesses.
But I do know, like, if you look at a plat book or the lake finder, that would identify those, but I'm not seeing any public accesses on our current layers.
Well, I mean, it's not an indefinite, I mean, it's a finite number of places, so it's not a, it's not a huge task. I imagine under, under lakes, ponds and that, and rivers. I mean, we want to show access points, you know, especially if you do that walk-in access on trout fishing up, you know, there's some really good opportunities. I think that'd be a valuable asset to review, to include that in the pond to lake and pond one instead of just a...
In the past, there has been, I don't know who put it out, it was DNR's map with accesses, some of the county ones were on. I haven't seen it for years, but there used to be.
Yeah, there's just a little icon where they're located, yeah.
Right.
No, it could include something like that.
Yeah, and that might be a layer that we can get from the DNR and provide you, if that makes sense.
If they have our accesses.
Yeah.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
And Chair, since we still have a couple more minutes until 10:25, could I ask Moira just a quick question? Moira, Scott Pearson from Minnesota DNR gave a presentation to the board today about the Becker County Groundwater Atlas and I'm just curious to know your perspective and on whether that has value to be incorporated in their county community-based comprehensive plan? Does that have any value at all in determining where, what, where zoning should be and things like that? What's your perspective on that?
Yeah, that's a very interesting piece of information. I think it's relevant. Sometimes we even look at soils, you know, the quality of soil, so the quality of water. It's all relevant to growth, like it either indicates that we want to preserve certain areas, mitigate impacts, or, you know, be more aware when we're going into an area to build. So, it all feeds information into where we're going with policies that the board will set, so I would say yes.
Good. And there will be, it sounds like they have a tentative and you'll have to remind me, Board, a tentative workshop date was in, later in January, I believe, 7th...
10th or 9th?
The 10th?
Yeah. I don't know if you want to be a part of that, Moira, but we'll let you know about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, the groundwater. I thought you were talking about...
No, the groundwater.
They don't have it set yet.
They don't have it set.
But, but we'll let you know. I just was curious of your perspective. But, but we'll let you know. I just was curious of your perspective on it.
Conflict with DNR and that date, so they're.
Right.
Soil and water and they're going to work it out.
Cool. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Anything else? I missed the last update meeting. Anything else to bring up?
Nope, I think that was, this was the big thing for us to bring up today was the GIS mapping.
Things are progressing fairly well with your plan, Moira?
Yes, we're going to see you next week. We're working on the workshop currently, figuring out all the activities and handouts. So we look forward to being there in person and getting really into the, the details.
Thanks.
The other thing that we did talk about, John, was the surveys. That was the main thing. There was just a little over five hundred surveys that we, we got, so that was what we talked about at the last one.
Sounds good. Nothing else? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten twenty-five.
I think we're ten twenty-five. We can.
Okay.
We want to plan the zoning.
Uh, Planning Commission recommendations for your consideration from December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I just want to touch on that first one of new business that was, it'll be on your next agenda, the sixteenth, but that's a Supas Ranch. Uh, there's a unique circumstance with that one. The conservation subdivision ordinance was written and specifically states that, uh, they'll be handled through a CUP process, which would be through the county board only. Since that was written, Lakeview, one of the six townships, adopted subdivision control, which we never anticipated when that obviously was written. So I will be meeting with Lakeview and County Attorney's Office just to clarify how that will be done. But as it's written now, it's, it states specifically that it goes to you. But I do want to be transparent with Lakeview since they took on that role. But we'll have further information on the sixteenth for you. So the first applicant was Saint Clair Family Revocable Trust requesting a conditional use permit for retail sales, specifically a bakery and furniture store with a recommendation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that conditional use permit.
Motion, Erica?
I'll second, but I think we need to have samples before we can vote.
You have what?
Samples.
Samples from the bakery.
No sample.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but.
The other discussion, motion or second? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carrie.
Uh, the next applicant, Cole and Sarah, or Cole Skaline and Sarah Skaline, requesting a change of zone from agricultural to residential. And I do know there will be testimony on both of those, so I don't, if you'd like to take that now.
I think that the applicant come up and speak first.
So I guess basically, like Kyle said, asking go from agriculture to residential. The board just approved one to the north in a way less populated area to, to residential. Um, and, and also in nineteen ninety-two, just north of my piece, about a mile and a half, they did this exact same thing because it was compatible with the community that it is. So since ninety-two, the population has grown a lot more. And, uh, and so if we can do it then, and we can do it last month, you know, I don't see any, any item here of discussion really. And, and I'm looking at putting it into residential for, for potential use into the future. My dad lives on the east half of the parcel, and I have an open west half of the parcel. If you did visit the property, there is a property encroachment there. They are mowing my wildflowers that I need to take care of here, but, uh, and I'll do that. But, so you're not seeing the full representation of the lot is what I'm getting at. It's about fifteen feet wider than what it actually looks like. I mean, residential lots, one acre by, by our, by the ordinances, so I can easily do that. You guys allow to build on twenty thousand acre lots on, you know, general development lakes, which they're very sensitive. This is not in a sensitive location, no environmental impacts, no wetlands. This is just a change of use, which our plan, you know, even our comp plan that I've read in the paper might be outdated. It even stated that this is in the section three to look to develop. So now we're going ahead twenty years. I would think that that's going to be consistent with what you're going to find from your consultant, Bolton and Mink. So that's what I'm requesting. Any questions of me?
No, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else to speak, favor the applicant? Not, uh, anybody here to speak and oppose it? Jeff? Just come up, state your name and your address.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Jeff Lewis. I live at two-one-eight-two-two Cozy Cove Road, which is basically immediately west of where Cole and Sarah currently live. We purchased this property in two thousand thirteen for the purpose of basically making it our residence. Prior to that, I've, I've worked in environmental programs mainly for the state of Minnesota. I've worked on zoning issues during my forty-year career and have a fair amount of experience. I've never been a zoning administrator, but I've worked on zoning issues like this for a long, long time in a professional capacity for the state of Minnesota. Basically, myself, my wife who's here, who worked for Becker County zoning for a while, and several of our neighbors as well, are all opposed to the proposed plan for, for both Cole and the following one for, for Eric Holban. Most of the rest of the people in the neighborhood have at least five-acre sized lots. Most of them were purchased when five acre was minimum size for lots in agricultural districts. And the minimum lot size has changed a couple of times since that period, going from five to, down to two and a half as it currently is. And a number of us opposed this proposal when it was brought forward a couple of years ago. Uh, it was brought forward with a little different approach. I think if I remember right, it was brought forward as a variance to the lot size standard of the ag district. And it was recommended for approval at that time by the Planning Commission. And a number of us came to the county board and expressed our concerns. And at that time, the county board voted it down. And I guess I'm here and I'm, I'm thinking some of the other neighbors are too, hoping to try and get that same outcome. Within the packet of information, I think this was actually in the, the packet from the minutes of the zoning commission meeting, is a map of the general area with the zoning classifications. And you can see everything else around it is agricultural in nature with the exception of a few of the lots that are developed within the shoreline district of Floyd Lake. To me, it makes some sense to use those shoreline districts if you want smaller lots to be developed for development purposes. Those shoreline districts are an area where you, we have seen smaller lots be developed. And within those shoreline districts, the lot sizes are a lot smaller than they are in the ag districts. Cole brought up the one that was recently approved, I think, just on the other side of Highway fifty-nine. And to me, that one was a little different. It's basically a request for rezoning. And it, if I understand it correctly, it's adjoining a residential area already and makes some sense for it to be identified as a residential change of zoning. Here, where there are no other residentials within at least a mile other than the shoreline district, to me, this is what I've always referred to as spot zoning, where you go ahead and you pick out to benefit a given individual and change a zoning classification. And for me, that's the only purpose that I see of this being proposed. There's, there's no, no benefit to anybody else in that given area other than the two property owners involved. And this, this request is not about a change. You know, there's nothing that's being proposed to be changed here. It's residential now. It will be residential in the future. And the only thing that's being changed is the minimum lot size that's required for development. And like I mentioned before, a number of us bought property out in agricultural districts with the hope that it would stay in that type of use. And, um, I understand, you know, areas are going to get developed and I'm not opposed to development. But to go ahead and spot zone something to benefit an individual financially just doesn't seem like a good approach to me, you know. We, we've always referred to it as planning and zoning because there's a, there's some planning behind it. And I don't see any planning behind this proposal here at all. I did want to clarify one other thing. I saw in the packet for the county board that in the discussion about this item, there was a statement that for the Eric Holban application, there was no opposition or no one spoke against that. And I know, John and, and Erica, you were both there. I asked to speak about that and the chairman of the Planning Commission basically would not allow me to speak because I had already spoken. And so I don't want those minutes to reflect that there was nobody opposed to that proposal who was at that meeting because I was. And with that, if there are no questions, I'll, I'll quit.
Questions? Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
Yeah, Don Scarry, two-five-seven-nine-three, County Road one forty-nine. I just want to start off with a, maybe an observation on the, when these letters go out, it just says change from ag residential, period. It doesn't, to a lot of people, that doesn't mean much. They probably look at, oh, just some administrative thing. To me, if you're going to ask for a change of residential, you should have a plan. What are you going to do? Why? To ask to do it now so that I can do something later, this isn't making sense to me. And that's what they're doing. And County Road one forty-nine is three miles long. There's no residential lot on it, period. And it just, as Jeff mentioned, what you did after my high review votes made sense. You had, you had a twelve-unit residential area, it's been there for forty years, and a couple there next to it. That makes sense, but this doesn't. And the thing is, if you do change this, allow it, you are setting the precedent. The floodgates are open. And I just don't think we need half or one acre lots in that room. There's a lot of traffic already and I think two and a half is plenty small. So with that, I would definitely be opposed to the project. And one more thing, right across the road, you're, you're in a different comprehensive use district. It's completely ag. The two people across them, they both have eighty acres. And I mean, it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to start putting one acre lots in, or even smaller. I mean, they're not saying what they want to do, they're just asking for a change of residential. And I just, I just think that's a very bad precedent to set. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Good morning, Board. I'm the adjacent property owner to this piece of property that Mr. Skaline is proposing to change.
State, state your name.
Oh, excuse me, Richard Grossman. My wife and I bought this piece of property from Cole years ago with the intentions of, you know, living in peace and harmony and, and having a piece of spot, property out in the country to live peacefully. Uh, the, the D was when we received the letter from the county, though, there was no intentions on this letter of what this property was going to be changed to. You know, are we going to have storage buildings there to devalue the property of ours? You know, is that something anybody, you want? You know, I, I look at the plat and stuff and I look at what's available. If Mr. Skaline wants to put in storage buildings, he's got plenty of property on his. Do it in your land, which is, his land is there, but you have room behind your home to the north, plenty of room there. Do what you want there with, you know, storage buildings, because this is what this is about, is putting up storage buildings. I oppose this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I just say one more thing? I think everybody here is talking about both of them.
Well, I was just going to bring that up because they're both pretty well tied together for the same thing and. Anybody else want to speak? Hearing none? Close public comment?
Kyle, if they were going to put stored units, isn't, is that a conditional use permit or is that just a change of zoning?
Uh, so if they were going to sell them, it would be a plating process, which would be through the county board. If they were going to lease them, it would be a conditional use permit process, which would also be through you. And I just want to note that nothing has changed the way we've noticed these since I've been here. They're requesting a change of zone. We don't know their future plans. They're allowed to do that. I don't know how many we've noticed the similar way, so that's not, that's not changed that way. I just want to make that clear.
Which is the board?
What's the, Kyle, what's the smallest size a residential lot can be that's not, not in a city?
One acre.
One acre, okay.
So if this, if this were to go through, they wouldn't be able to, if it changes to residential and they want to lot it out, they would have to have at least one acre lots?
Yes. So within the shoreline, we have seven lakes that are general development. The smallest you can have on a general development is twenty thousand, which would be just a little under a half acre. Everything outside of that, not on a general development lake, zone residential, one acre minimum.
And now I want to go to what Cole said, that according to this land district that this is in, where both these properties are, it's developmental, or it's a develop, it's district, or it's, the land use is to develop it.
Let me pull that up for you.
A point, though, to develop means different things. It doesn't, it doesn't start stating lot size. I mean, residential doesn't necessarily mean that it's one acre lot size. It's what residential means that this is a residential area. It will grow as residential. And the minimum lot size currently is two and a half acres for ag. So, I mean, I don't, don't say that just because we have a plan that says to develop a residential, it means we have to go to residential determination to reduce it to one acre lot size. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a difference there. It's, it doesn't mean that we have to go down to one acre because to develop, you know, it's, that's kind of a, it's kind of a play on words, in my opinion.
So Policy District Three is what they're referencing and, and as, um, so it says it's the economic and population center of the county, Detroit Lakes and Fraser. Significant resort and tourist-oriented development. Most of the county's developed lakeshore, most of the county's population. Distinct ecological area includes parts of two interregional corridors, Highway ten and thirty-four, and is a designated development area in wider strategic plan.
And in my, my opinion is if you're going to develop a parcel, I mean, you want to have a, a good work plan. I mean, you start, in my opinion, you get down to one acre lots and you're going to start and indiscriminately put them out there. You're going to have issues with, you're going, everyone wants an outbuilding, everyone wants, I mean, there, it's just going to, I mean, it's going to fill up that one acre fairly fast for, for a rural community. And I think the townships are going to all be put under stress having to develop their own ordinances to, because I don't know of a township out there that's going to want one acre lots unrestricted in the rural community, so. I guess, you know, I opposed it originally and I, and I will continue to oppose this, uh, so I will. I, I certainly have a, a problem when you have residential speckled here and you're saying it's close, it's a mile away from this one, so I, so I should be allowed to do it. Now, if you start doing that mentality, you may as well save the whole county as residential and, and be done with it. And then we don't have these issues to come before us, so.
Uh, we, we, we close public input, so. Just one quick question.
Kyle, what you just read, is that reasons for zones in the area residential?
It's just policies that were, it's, I guess, goals and objectives set in the, in the policy district. It's just policies that were, it's, I guess, goals and objectives set in the policy district of that area.
Which is the board?
I think it's all residential. I think our whole country is residential. And I understand, nobody wants development next to them. But if we didn't do, if we don't have development, we don't have places for people to live, and we're really short on people, places to live. Erica knows this. One acre is enough land. It's all, it's all about how much money do you have? What's available? There aren't, there is not places available. There are some, but we're short on available places to live. And all you guys live out there. And I understand nobody wants a neighbor. And, you know, maybe you got to buy more land, you know? But these guys bought this land. Really? No, I really do. I, if you want to, if you want to control it, control it, own it. And if you don't, you know, and I'm trying to see, I know a lot of you people over there, and I'm trying to see how a house with kids and a yard is hurting you. And I can't see it myself. And that's the way I feel about it. I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to concur. Do I have a second?
Are we, are we doing both of them?
Point of port. Nope.
Or one of them?
One of them.
Okay. I'll make a second.
A second by Erica? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Carried for.
Okay, the next applicant was Erica and Alyssa Holman requesting again agricultural from, or from Ag to residential.
And this is pretty much right next.
It's adjacent to the Skeline parcel. It's a little bit larger, but adjacent.
Yeah.
This, Cole's track was 2.8 acres, Eric's is 4.58.
Anybody here to speak in favor?
I can speak, but basically they're the same. Morning.
Morning.
Happy New Year. Eric Holman, 21820 Wickdale Trail. Asking the board for basically the same thing, change from Ag to residential. Basically what we just did with Cole.
What is that body of water right there?
It's a little pond.
Little pond.
Yeah. Drying up right now, but.
Any questions there?
Yeah, do you guys have any questions about it? Or, I mean, it's hashed out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the opposition is the same. Anybody want additional comments? Close public comment?
Just a question then. So this parcel be, there could be four lot, four homes in that, correct? Four individual parcels?
That's correct.
Just so you know.
I just, I just want to go off a little bit about what Richard said. And I understand that this, this area, you know, where this area is, but this is not that far from town. And we have a housing crisis in our county. And I think you can only, there is no more, no other place to build in town. I live out in the country, I understand it. But I think that this, we have, we have to do something to look at potential additional housing brought in.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, that's, that's, that's all fine and dandy. If you want to get a development going out on a larger piece of property and put a development in there and have one acre lots on that, so you have your green space adjoining it, so you protect your neighbors from, I mean, you would have a plan to put forward to your neighbors to say, this is what we're planting. This is the improvements we want. This is where our septic's going to go. We have a joint septic. We're going to have a community water. I mean, right now, you're, you're asking, you're just hoping that this turns out right. I mean, there's, and if, and these two, these might be fine. I mean, I'm not saying these won't be a good, but this is not just for today. This is, this is for the future of Becker County and one acre, one acre lots throughout the county. Because if you, there is not a place in Becker County unless you get in the far west, northwest, that's purely Ag. It's mostly for enjoyment of our recreation and environment. So you are putting a, you are, you are, you are putting the direction of this county for the short-term future in, in your hands right now. And I, and I'm not going to argue anymore. We all have our opinions, and I think the opinion, my opinion is this, this type of development is wrong. So it's not necessarily going to be bad, but I think it's wrong.
Consensus of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Richard, second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion? Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do just want to note for some, for you guys to consider, our next meeting is with Bolton and Mink is January 9th. And one of the things that we've talked about is the county being blanket zone Ag. I think a lot of effort needs to get put into where residential should be in that plan.
Again, my notice to townships, get on board because you're going to have to make up your own ordinances if you do not want one acre lots throughout your township. And I'm going to go to my township and ask them, we better get ahead of this because it's going to get ugly.
Because you'll have people living everywhere, Barry.
We'll have one acre lots, that'll be, that'll be very different.
I know it'd be terrible.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Chair, yes, I wanted to bring something to the board's attention. I got a request from Karen Pfeifer. She's a consultant for a nonprofit group. She asked if she could bring a financial request on behalf of Cornerstone, who's, who's doing a public facility. They're one of the many external applicants that had requested special general funds. So the question I have for the board is, shall I communicate with her just to send a letter to the board? Or does the board want to reconsider talking to these external agencies?
Well, she appeared before as a year and a half, goes to two years ago. And we didn't move forward at that time.
But she has made a request to come to the board. I said I would check in with the board to see if you would like her to come. And so certainly I'd let her know about open forum, where she could come to open forum and certainly say something. But since she's made that direct request, I would like to just ask on how I could communicate back to her.
She should come and present to the board, yeah.
As an agenda item or open forum?
Agenda.
Okay, then I'll put it on the agenda for the 16th.
We've had a lot of other requests from that type of organizations too, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Will you adjourn? Adjourn, John? Or adjourn?
We can adjourn.
Okay.
I think.